Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 2nd, Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting. I will now call the meeting to order and I ask Commissioner Tony Kozart to please lead us in our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much for bowing with me. Gracious and loving God, our Father, we're so thankful on this day to come and to just say thank you for all of your many blessings. As we look back over the previous year, God, we declare that you've been mighty good to us and we thank you for the multitude of your blessings. And as we go through this new year, I ask your blessings upon our county's leadership. Thank you for our board, I thank you for administration and all of our workers, and I pray that you would bless them as they deliver service to those in our county. Also, God, I ask if you will look down upon our people, what favor? That you would keep us in your loving care. God, that in a natural disaster, we're not harm us in that you will bless us in multiple ways. We thank you, God, that this community is one that we love and we call our home, a place where we work, a place where we cherish one another. So continue to keep us, God, and have us to stay focused on you and live in our lives so that you be glorified. Use us now in this meeting to your glory as we meet and may all things be pleasing to you. We ask it in your holy and righteous name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. All right, our next item is the consent agenda and we're going to poll the first item there, the budget amendment number five, and we're going to put it into manager's report. Be a good spot to put it. Board, you've had an opportunity to read and review the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
My all motion that the consent agenda be stand approved.
Second. We've got a motion by Commissioner Zola J. and a second by Rob Wilifert. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any against? Like sign? Motion carries. Next is public comment. We've got one person this evening has signed up and it is Mary O'Brien. And if you will, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And you've got three minutes.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Mary O'Brien.
Patrick Messenger.
110 Rupert Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. And we're here tonight to introduce ourselves to you. We are Meridian Waste, we're a North Carolina company and we're one of multiple proposers who submitted a proposal package to you in regards to your landfill operations. And we're a little old school in that we like to be able to look at our potential partners and hopefully future partners eye to eye and for you to know who we are when you're evaluating and when the evaluation committee is looking at our proposal. We are headquartered in North Carolina. We operate in six states. We operate both MSW landfills as well as CND, Construction and Demolition Degree Landfills. We have hauling companies and we have recycling centers. And we are very excited about the proposal that we turned in to you all on December 15th. We understand Mr. Falls will be having some meetings in the near future. We hope to make that shortlist and to talk more about our proposal. But we wanted to make sure you knew who we were, the experience that we have in operating landfills and doing the best job for you. We did propose on all four options, one through four. We're eager to work with you at any of those levels. And, you know, the difference about Meridian Waste than our other companies is the fact that here I am, your Chief Marketing Officer. Patrick is our area president, our chief executive officer, our vice president of operations. We are here to make sure that we're involved in your community if we have this opportunity, that we give back to your community and that we protect your natural environment. We realize that to be good environmental stewards, you have to be good community stewards. And we host, we bring the community into the landfills that we operate and that we own so that it kind of breaks the vibe of people being scared of landfills. To us, what we're doing is we're being environmental stewards and we're responsible for the waste that other people generate and we're protecting the natural environment in a safe manner. And we want people to see how we operate, what we do, and that the business that we do is an incredible vital infrastructure asset. And we would like to be able to bring that to your county if we are so selected to work with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this evening.
One other thing, I did have a letter that didn't quite make it into the proposal. This is from Pike County, Missouri, one of our locations where we have an MSW landfill. All three, they're a little bit smaller in terms of the amount of commissioners, but all three commissioners signed it and I'd like to enter this into the record.
Thank you. Okay. Only having one sign for the public comments, we'll next move on to solid waste matter. Solid waste matters. And Jason Falls?
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, good evening. The purpose of this item is to consider award of scrap metal recycling contract. The county staff released a request for proposal for scrap metal recycling services in October. We received two bids and they were publicly read aloud by staff in the presence of the public information officer. A committee comprised of the public information officer, interior attorney and myself met on December, met on December the 4th to review and evaluate each proposal based on the RFP criteria method of award. Upon discussion and evaluation of the proposals, the committee recommended Mike's Auto Salvage at a quoted rate of $100 per gross ton. On average, the sale of scrap metal each year between Oxford and Butler site is around $50,000 depending on the metal market. The contract awarded is based on the American metals market, which is a prescription that these metal dealers pay into. It's quite expensive for them, but that's part of their business. The contract will be for three years with an option to extend to two, two one-year periods. Attached to your agenda is a copy of the agreement prepared by the county attorneys. The compliance with contract and purchasing policy. This is a service contract as detailed in the service and lease contracts, section four of the Granville County purchasing policy. The service contracts may be awarded without solicitation, pricing or bids and the price of goods or services. But I'll tell you, the county staff has done their due diligence in getting comparative pricing, meeting upper, legal and upward management requirements as well as the fair and equitable review of said bids. It is the recommendation of the solid waste director and review committee, we recommend contracting with Mike's Auto Salvage at $100 per gross ton. And this is revenue to the county on an yearly basis.
Commissioners, you've heard the recommendation. Are there any questions? Based on the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation coming from Mr. Falls.
Second.
We've got a motion made by Commissioner Kozart, seconded by Commissioner J. Any further questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Seeing none? Motion carries. Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
Next is project management. I'm assuming Mr. Phillips is going to handle this one. Interior alterations at the Berea Branch Library. I see we have Mr. Will Robinson and Maggie Hall, our library director and the librarian at Berea. Yes?
Good evening, Chairman. Granville County Commissioners, this request considers awarding a fixed-price service contract for the needed planned interior alterations of the space at the Berea Branch Library. The Granville County Library System has expressed the need to convert approximately 200 square feet of storage space into administrative office and small meeting space. This work was planned during the fiscal year 2223 budget and where $25,000 was budgeted for construction. We issued a RFP on November 27th. We got responses from two prospective bidders and it's my recommendation to award the fixed-price service contract to Paul Wilifert Builder for an amount not to exceed $23,600 unless authorized by an approved change order. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Board, any questions? You see the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, Paul and I are very distant related, couple granddads. I'm going to recuse myself from a vote.
Okay. Does the board feel comfortable with Commissioner Wilifert's request to recuse himself from the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
County attorney? If Mr. Wilifert has no financial interest in this, other than that, does he have to vote or?
I think he should. I think he should vote if he has no financial interest in it.
Okay. We appreciate you being forthright and telling us that you're distant related.
I think he's disclosed the relationship, you have no financial interest in it, right?
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner Hinman, to approve the contract not to exceed 23,600 unless authorized by a change order. All those in favor? Aye. Any approve? Like sign? Seeing none? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Emergency Services. Good evening. Ready?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. I remember a few months back, I come to y'all on behalf of the Fire Commission where they recommended putting paid firefighters in the station Monday through Friday, 10 hours a day during business hours. Fire departments, they've gone to the Fire Commission and at this time they're finding it hard to employ people five days a week. Some of them are having better luck than others, but some of them have a difficult time getting someone in there all five days. So they made a request to the Fire Commission that they'd be allowed to employ two firefighters on certain days, still during the Monday through Friday daytime hours, but some of the days where they didn't feel, for example, like if they didn't have anyone on Monday, they might could double up on Tuesday to get the people in there working and getting jobs accomplished that they need to get done. So by doing this, you know, it will help them perform some of the tasks like one person alone can't do. It's like if they're flowing hydrants or doing some of the water flow and studies, they really need two people. So it would help in that matter. So at the November 27th Fire Commission, it was unanimous voted to allow each of the 12 fire departments, was a recommendation to come to y'all to continue up to 50 hours of staffing per week, up to 10-hour days, still only Monday through Friday, but allow up to two firefighters per day, but only if another day during that same week is not covered. It will not carry over to following weeks. And the Fire Commission would reevaluate this on the April 22nd, 2024 meeting. And this is something the Fire Commission recommends, recommending as well as I am recommending to y'all for approval.
Okay.
Any questions?
Chair, I have questions, but they'll come after the vote on this, but not related to this.
Okay.
They just have a hard time getting paid fireworks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've reached out, we've served the fire, or to all the fire chiefs, like trying to figure out something where us as a county can help them. We're waiting on, you know, some feedback this, I think we'll give them to the end of this week to let us know that once we get that information, I'll get up with Terry and see if we can get something like pushed out to like for further outreach, you know, using the county's website or county's social media, you know, to try to help get these people in the fire stations. To try for helping recruit.
Paid fireworks on the odd days can, 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 can work. Take like Oxford, if they, if they have, if one of their fireworks is, is that off day? They can get paid and go work at the station.
Yeah. If the, if the fire department was to hire them, yes, they can do that.
Do they have to be from Granville County? Could it be from Vance County or?
So yes, it could, but that would be up to each fire department to make that decision being that they're, they're their own incorporated business.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that, I know we have some, some fireworks from Granville County is working in Person County, getting the Person County.
That's correct. I know there's several from Berea that does that.
I just have a silly question, quite frankly. So, but the whole point of doing this during the week was to help cover the station so that they could have a body there to get going and get the truck wherever it needed to be.
Yes.
And, and now if we have that date not being covered, are, are we going to be back to the same situation we were in before?
Sir, I believe is the full intention is to go back to that, but right now we're just, it's nobody on certain days at all. It's, it would just be just awash. But they're just trying to get some of the other stuff caught up is why they're coming to request being two people a day.
I would add that, excuse me, that the interest is still very much to have all of those shifts covered and we've been talking about different forms of incentive that might be put in place to, to help incentivize the departments to really focus on having everyday daytime shift be covered. But in the meantime, I agree that, that allowing them to meet some other departmental objectives is, is a reasonable, a reasonable objective as well.
To be frank with you, driving a fire truck, responding to a call, pulling off the line, connecting to a water source, doing all the different things, difficult. It's a difficult task for one person. So I am hopeful that one day we can move toward two. But we're having a difficult time with one. But in the meantime, it's an opportunity for them to do things like hydro checking where you've got to have more than one person for safety reasons and it doesn't hurt in regards to fire responses. And, and then you actually have a fire engineer on the, on the vehicle and someone there that can actively engage the fire. So the goal is to have one at every station, but I'll follow up with more of that after we, we talk about this with some questions we have. I think you'll be interested in Jason answering.
Listen, you're right. One, one fire, get the truck to the scene. His job is to get that, get that pump up and working and make sure it is working. He can't run, get the whole dead run back and make sure that, that pump is working. So.
You're correct. I know we have a public safety department in Butler, which they, the fire engineer may have to do multifaceted things and of course, I had the privilege of working with the Durham Public Safety in which we did. The fire engineer would actually have to do a multiple task as well, but I can assure you that it's not an easy task with one person and I think we need to support this. This is a recommendation by the Fire Chiefs Association brought to us by the Fire Commission and I think our board should support this recommendation as they work to achieve staffing on a, on a, on a, on a better basis, but it's going to take time.
Good. Go for it.
I'll make the motion that we accept the commission's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Wilifert, seconded by Commissioner May. Any more questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Like sign? Seeing none? Motion carries. You have some comments on this topic?
I do. I just wanted to ask, hello, Jason. Good evening. Currently, how many of our fire departments have entered the contract?
Entered the contract? I believe we are, I think we're 100% now.
Of those, how many have submitted their budgets?
All but, I got it all on my desk. It's all but two or three.
Okay, all but a few.
Yeah. It's very, it's just.
And this is so that the board, just to bring the board up to speed, without that budget submission, then additional funding will not come to them. And so that's very important that they get, get that accomplished because we want to provide them as much funding as the Fire Commission has thus far brought to the board and recommend it to our board to do. One of the issues that I understand from talking to our folks is wages. And so do you happen to know if any of the Fire Chiefs Association is going to talk about, discuss about the wages that they're paying and whether or not they're competitive enough?
Not that I'm aware of, but I was not able to attend the last Fire Chiefs meeting, but they typically don't hold a lot of business during that meeting, but I can't say they didn't, but it hasn't been brought to my attention yet.
And if wages were to increase, I don't think there's an impediment with funding. Agreed?
Agreed.
County manager?
I think that's right. I think the fire tax at this point could, could, could cover small changes at least in the, in hourly wage for the daytime firefighters.
So board, one of the things we run into if you've been working in Person County, Wake County, Vance County, other counties, and it may pay the same, may not pay as much, may pay more, we need to make sure that we've, and of course, we want the commission to study it and work with our Fire Chiefs Association, but be it positioned to where we can be competitive so that we can place a body on every truck and part of that would be, could mean increasing the amount of funding, which I'm confident based on the tallies that we've got from the last meeting we had, we're funding is, is good for that if necessary.
Correct.
One last question aboard. This is for you and the board. One of the matters that came up is how do we increase first responders and the issues therein? Currently, if you're providing as a volunteer service, first responder, it's about $5,000 additional dollars a year, which by far does not cover the expenses that it would take for a large number of responses. I am hopeful that, working with Mr. Reavis, the Fire Commission and the Fire Chiefs Association, I'm hopeful that we can see a recommendation that would substantially increase the amount of funding for first responders, that would encourage that, as you know, that would help with our overall EMS system. And by increasing that amount would provide better responses overall throughout the county, potentially at more stations that participate it now because not all our fire, volunteer fire departments participate in first responders. That's, and, and just for the, for many residents that are new in the area, 12 of our departments are volunteer. There's no one there at 11, 12 o'clock at night. And these men and women have to get it from their homes, have to respond to the fire station, then respond to the fire. And so we have a ways to go to improve our system and we have a ways to go to get to the funding that we truly need that will, to meet the greater needs of fire services, but we're getting there and the Fire Commission is tasked with getting there in a practical, logical and physically responsible manner and to which I think they're doing so far. But I would highly encourage the, all departments through communication from the county, I hope, to get their budgets in so we can release the funding that the departments are needing. In addition, how many departments have, have agreed or have taken on the $20,000 that was provided for outfit for the stations?
So I believe all of them are, are in the process of taking it, but some of them due to supply chain issues, it's just taken a while for them to get the merchandise in to be reimbursed.
Okay, so for the board, so $20,000 was allocated for every volunteer department to, for showers or whatever they needed to create an environment at the fire station that would promote them being able to have the body there to respond to fires. So thank you. That's all my comments and questions. Just wanted to bring the board up to speed.
I got, I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was, well, because it may, uh, it's a ridiculous, are we saying that, uh, our, our wages, our wages for volunteers, that's why we can't get provided to man these stations? Are we saying I was?
I'd like to answer that. It's Mr. J. I'm not sure, but I think that's something we have to carefully evaluate and really trust our Fire Commission and our Fire Chiefs Association to provide that feedback to Emergency Services and the county manager's office. We don't want to miss the mark because of funding when we have the funding available. That's, 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 that was the point.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what you're saying.
Yes, sir. I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about it. In some areas, it's competing with Wake County and they're, they're going to pay, pay more. Vance County, I know what they're paying. Person County, I'm not sure about them, but I'm not certain about Person, but I do know in some areas that there's disparity. How that's impacting, I can't say, but I look forward to hearing back from the Fire Commission. I just didn't want, I want, if it came back before the board, I wanted you to want, I wanted you to know what we're discussing at these board meetings and there may be a potential to come back with a couple of things regarding that. One is wages. One would be also emergency first responders.
All right. Good discussion. Anything else? You're good? Thank you. Appreciate being here tonight. Our next item on the agenda is appointments. We've got the Butler Board of Adjustments ETJ member. Does anyone have anyone for those? Got one, I see.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Pennington has, would like to be reappointed and I'd like to submit his name for reappointment and at this time, I don't have anyone else unless another board member has someone.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. Gooch for Mr. Pennington.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Kozart. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. And we're going to hold the other one. If anyone lives in the Butler ETJ and would like to serve on the Butler Board of Adjustments, please reach out to your commissioner. Next, we've got the Granville County Citizens Advisory Committee on Environmental Affairs. We've got a whole slate of folks on this one. The term of Steve Timberlake, District 2, Joe Orsby, District 3, Chad McHenry, District 4, Mike Wood, District 7, appointed by six, Judy Cheek from District 7 and David Hinton, ex officio, District 2, expire in January. Mr. Timberlake, Mr. Orsberry and Mr. Hinton are not eligible for reappointment. Mr. McHenry and Ms. Cheek have resigned. So if we can go in order of districts, that would be outstanding. District 2?
District 2 does not have anybody at this time.
We'll, we'll hold that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. District 3?
Please hold.
Hold that. District 4?
Please hold, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And Mr. Vice Chairman, if you'll take mine, please?
Yes. Do you, do we have anyone for District 5?
I do. I would like to move the name of Katie Selgreen.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right. All those, we want to go ahead and vote now. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed likewise? As have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. And then District 7?
Don't have anyone at this time.
Mr. Wood? If that's okay to you?
Okay. I'd like to put for, uh, Mr., uh, I'd like to put for Mr. Mike Wood to serve District 7 as a representative living in District 7.
I'd like to put for Mr. Mike Wood to serve District 7 as a representative living in District 7.
There you go.
A second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner May, to appoint Mike Wood to fill the District 7 seat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we're going to be holding 2, 3, 4. Oh, an ex officio. Does anyone have someone for the ex officio? Thank you, Deborah.
Can I ask a question? Is the ex officio, are they term limited? Because they're not a voting member?
I think typically, they are not term limited because they're on the Board because of the office that they represent. And just as an observation, I think they often are voting members, but not necessarily. Does that make sense? I think that can vary, but just because they're ex officio doesn't mean that they are not a voting member. Did you want to make that recommendation for District, for next ex officio? Okay, we'll hold that. Great. Right, but great question. All right. Next Board is the Granville County Library System Board of Trustees. And we're going to be making appointments. The terms of Karen Alley, District 7, appointed by 3, and Amy Wester, District 6, expire in January. Both are eligible for reappointment. So, is that a District 3 appointment first?
Karen and I have been playing tag, so I'm not positive she's willing to agree, but I'm pretty sure she will.
Thumbs up.
Do you think we should do it without her permission? Yes, she is.
Okay.
So, make it?
Yeah, I would do it.
All right. So, I'm going to put Karen Alley, good on Alley, rather, back on as for District 3.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hinman and seconded by Commissioner Wilford to appoint Karen Alley back to the Library Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gooch?
Do we have any appointments for District 6?
To appoint Amy Wester?
We have appointment. We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Ayes have it, and welcome.
Thank you. Next, we've got the Granville Vance District Board of Health. The terms of Diane Capper, pharmacist. Sharon Pittman, District 1. Carolyn White, District 2. And Dr. Bridget Waters, veterinarian, appointed by District 2, expire in January. Ms. Pittman, Ms. White, and Dr. Waters are eligible for reappointment. Diane Capper has served three consecutive terms, and she serves at the pharmacist position and may be reappointed if another pharmacist cannot be found for that position. Again, we'll go in the district order if we can. District 1 with...or do you want to do the whole slate? District 1, Sharon Pittman? You moving to reappoint?
I'm moving to reappoint.
Okay, so we've got a second. Got a motion by Commissioner Jay, seconded by Commissioner Gooch to reappoint Sharon Pittman, which is at large, but District 1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carolyn White?
I move to reappoint Carolyn White.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Jay, to reappoint Carolyn White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then Dr. Bridget Waters, veterinarian. This is appointed by 2, District 2.
I'll move to reappoint Dr. Waters.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Jay, to reappoint Dr. Waters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On Diane Capper, I know she actually has moved to, up to Car Lake, live in Vance County currently. This is the Granville Vance Board, but I would like to yell that if you can find another pharmacist, especially considering she's served her three terms. You found one, and you're ready to ride?
I'm ready.
Okay, knock it out.
To appoint Kelly Claiborne, pharmacist with Professional Pharmacy.
Right here in Oxford.
Right here in Oxford.
Awesome.
She is...Kelly, she's willing to do it.
Great. Good work. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wilford and a second by Commissioner Cozart to appoint Kelly Claiborne?
Claiborne.
Claiborne as the pharmacist position in the Granville Vance District Board of Health. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good work.
Madam Clerk, are you going to let Ms. Capper know?
Okay, next is the Senior Services Advisory Committee. And we've got a slate of folks serving on there, starting with District 2, Betty Cruz, David Smith, District 2 as well, Ms. Cooper in District 4, Ms. Harris in District 5, and Richard Lyons, District 7, appointed by 6, expire in January. Ms. Cruz and Ms. Cooper are no longer eligible for reappointment. Go ahead.
At this time, I don't...I would like to reappoint David Smith. I do not have anyone yet for Ms. Cruz's position.
Okay, so we have a motion for reappointment of David Smith?
Second.
By Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Hinman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. District 4?
Mr. Chairman, if I may hold on Ms. Cooper.
You sure can. To District 5?
Um, Ms. Jillian, Carol Jillian.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Wilford, to appoint Ms. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Wait, he's... I haven't spoken to him. So, I'm going to hold on my appointment for Mr. Lyons, even though he's in District 7 now, so I talked to him. And then District 3?
I understand she's very ill, so I need to find someone else.
Okay, so we'll hold that one as well. Okay. That brings us to the County Manager's Report. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And despite the slide that's up, I think maybe we should move forward with discussion of the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda. Okay. And I'll point out for members of the audience and Commissioners that the part of this budget amendment that is of particular interest tonight were the significant additions from other parts of the Sheriff's Office budget to the overtime budgets of both the patrol side and the detention side of the budget. We are keeping those line items whole, given...yes, sir? I'm sorry, Sheriff. I didn't recognize you earlier. I saw you, but it didn't register. So, welcome this evening. We've got the Sheriff here tonight. Yep. I'm going to hand over the microphone to him in just a second, but we are transferring a significant amount of money, $80,000 into the... from other parts of the Sheriff's Budget into the patrol side overtime budget and $27,000 into the detention side overtime budget. These are both significant additions, and I appreciate the Sheriff being here tonight to answer any questions that the Board may have and to talk to us about his plans for managing this part of his budget moving forward.
First, good evening to the Commissioners. First, Happy New Year. And we have to always thank God for what he does in being the author and curator of everything. I've been working with Drew, Russ, Tony, Ms. Karina, on our budget. So, to bring things to where we are, for the first time in a long time, we're fully staffed on the LEO side of the house. I have one vacancy. And that's a sergeant's vacancy in our Special Operations Division. Of the 65 sworn deputies, I have 20 on patrol, which means five per shift, including a sergeant and a corporal on every rotation. I have two lieutenants that are in charge of their various shifts. So, of those that we have now, I have 10 starting school to get their certifications on Thursday, one starting school in Alamance County to start her certification process on the 8th. So, we're fully staffed. On the detention side of the house, well, we're one short on the LEO side. On the detention side of the house, we have four vacancies, which means we're, I think, we're around 88 to 90 percent. Is that right, Ms. Karina, on detention? So, we're at 88 to 90 percent on our detention side of the house, which means we've sent a lot of people to training. We've incurred a lot of overtime because of two things. One, we didn't think that we were incurring so much overtime based on BLET. It's supposed to be a 644-hour course. Community colleges have the autonomy to raise that to any level they think is suitable for those schools. So, with Russ, myself, the County Attorney, Drew, Ms. Karina, and my chiefs got together, and we met to come up with a contract where we do not pay overtime for BLET anymore. They are set to an eight-hour standard. They signed the agreement. They know they're in a training status for those 700-plus hours. So, they don't incur overtime to be paid out as much as it was during this class that we went through. So, our students now will be not paid for that all the time commuting, all the overtime, the hazing things that go on through these classes, and we got that kind of squared away. So, that should significantly impact what we did to bring those numbers down. For the detention, it was pretty much the same thing. They were supposed to have a class that lasted four weeks. It turned into a six-week course because of the instructor availability, but our folks still were entitled to go to class. When they go to class, no instructor. They leave. They come to work because we don't want them to burn their time, so we put them on the clock going to work. So, those things, we've worked with Vance Granville Community College with to get those things done. We also were putting staff in every school to make sure that every school had a presence within some time of the day, six hours to, three hours to six hours at every school. So, we had patrol deputies working over sometimes to cover the schools. We had our investigators working in the schools for three or four hours a day to make sure during mass movements, the schools are being covered. So, that increased our budget. That increased our overtime spending, and we're asking that you consider giving us this increase so we can go ahead and finish out what we're doing, finish out the year, and work with the County Manager and his folks and finance to make sure we stay tight until our budget is increased next year.
But, excuse me, if I understand you, starting with the next BLET classes, they will not be paid overtime?
None, zero.
Okay. Travel included, no travel time?
They'll be getting 8.25. Their class is supposed to start, PT starts at 06:45 in the morning. So, what we did was incorporated that 0.25 for a lineup, basically. They have to be there about 15 minutes before class. They do their lineup, and then they'll go to class. They won't get paid any lunches. They'll get no travel time. They're going from the time they get there through the class and the time they leave. Chief Buster, who is the valedictorian of the last class, who's with us, will manage all the time that they're spending there, working with Bishop and working with the community college to manage those hours, to check off weekly on the hours that they're incurring. I think Drew has had conversations with the school as well to see how those things and how the statute applies to how they could increase the number of hours over the state mandate, and they have the autonomy to increase it to a level that they think is comparable to a sufficient student or a curriculum. So, the state mandate is 644 hours, and they can increase it to whatever they wanted to. So, we have to work with them to figure out a way how, moving forward. And I think that the County Manager and the County Attorney, working with a contract for our next time we start doing stuff, we will have two-year contracts. And what I'm asking for, to have students and deputies sign a two-year contract upon hire. But it's my hope that we, as a community, embrace these new employees, show them the right way so we don't have a turnover anymore. And anybody we hire next, they will have a two-year commitment to Granville County for training, all the things we supply them with, because of the cost to send them to training, to outfit them, to go through the hiring processes. So, we want to make sure if they come, they stay. And that's where I'm trying to work with Drew and with Jim, and I appreciate what they're doing to help with this process as well. And like I said, Russ and Mr. Tony, I appreciate you good too.
Do you feel that this 80,000, if I hear correctly, and 27,000, would that get you through the rest of this fiscal year?
Because we changed the way we were doing business, and because we're cutting out all that overtime, the comp time is going to be burned at some point, and we understand that. But if we can manage the class part, we should be okay. So, when they get out of school, there is no, hey, you're going to work some overtime. Nope, you're going to the house. So, we're just going to make sure we're fiscal responsible, and that's why we're not going to pay it out anymore. Additionally, for the people that work, they were, we had opportunities to go back, and Karina did a lot of work trying to track how people checked on, how things worked. From now on, people do not check on when they leave their house in the county and go to work. They check on at the office. When you get to the office, your day starts. Now, if you're en route to something or you're en route to work, you get a call or something happens that you have to respond to, your day then starts. If you work an eight-hour shift, your shift starts when you come to that office. Our jail staff do the same thing. Our jail staff don't get paid when they leave home en route to work. They get paid when they punch that clock at the office. So, we're doing the same thing with our 8 to 5 people. The people that work patrol, when they get into this county, if they live out of the county, your time starts when you get to the county line. Your time ends when you cross the county line. So, we're going to use the mobile devices with the technology to track where they check in at, where they check on, the clocks at the jail. We've had the thumb readers in there to make sure that they're signing in. And to be honest, there was a... the transition with the new executive time was kind of a tough rollout for our staff. Because there were so many moving pieces, the 28-day cycles versus getting paid every two weeks, we have a collage of pay scales and pay cycles within our agency. And we're working with the upper management to understand, can we get it streamlined to have one pay system where everybody's paid the same time? So, we want to make sure those things also are part of the conversations. But yes, Commissioner, I think we should be good for the rest of the year because we're taking that money internally and moving it around from certain line items that we don't spend a lot of money on. So, we're also looking at how we're going to generate more revenue with, now we're full with federal inmates. I can't take anymore. Yes, and we're also in the process of a bidding contract for a new commissary that's going to generate more revenue for us than the way they're going to do things. And I have to get some guidance from the County Attorney on some other opportunities that we want to look at. I want to bring food trucks into where the inmates can, families can buy food, and we charge a service fee, which I found at Department of Public Safety and Corrections, will charge to have them deliver pizzas to the inmates inside prisons. So, if it's been a legal standard where they're generating revenue that way and giving them a sense of home, that you're doing something that reflects with them being, you know, more kind of gentler approach as far as our custodial component, we're looking at that. We've also talked to some local barbers now, because right now, we get sending inmates, and I will take ownership for this, we send inmates to court looking raggedy, right? I want to start talking to all the barbers in this community to give them an opportunity to do the same thing. If they come in and cut half of the inmates, the inmate family pay for those haircuts. But there's got to be a service fee because we're providing a place for them to cut haircuts, to do haircuts for the inmates. So, it's the same way we're going to look at doing the food, the same way we do with commissary, same way we do haircuts. So, when they go to court, they look presentable because they are somebody's kids. So, all those things we're putting out there, and we're going to try to generate revenue to offset, to help pay down things. We're looking at those things as well as working with the County Manager to contain our budget and get our arms around our spending as far as overtime.
I know I sound like a broken record. I've asked you just, are we bringing in any revenue for the detention, sir?
Yes. And I think the last time some numbers were off were the Yes, and I think the last time some numbers were off, or the payments were off, but it should be right around twenty thousand a month, if, if you got that, Drew or not. It should be somewhere between eighteen and twenty thousand that we're looking at. We also have to understand, we have certain inmates that can't be housed in our county that we have to send somewhere else. So some of that money will have to come out of that to pay for housing inmates somewhere else, because the district attorney or somebody has a case that they can't be housed in the same location, or our juveniles. I don't think we're spending a lot on juveniles, we're not spending a lot on inmate clothing. So there's money in our budget that we can pull from to help offset that without coming and asking for a budget increase at this time. So I think we should be good for the rest of the year.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go.
Uh, Ms. Sheriff, um, so why are, I don't understand if we're not paying anybody that lives in the county pay until they physically walk into and check in?
Correct.
Why are we paying somebody that chooses to live outside the county pay when they get into the county?
Two different disciplines. What I said was, if people work twelve-point-two-five, which are patrol deputies, and they live outside of the county, they can start taking calls once they get to the county line. They can start answering calls then. The people that work Monday through Friday, eight-to-five, who are not answering calls like investigators, unless they're gonna answer a call when they get in their car or something, emergency happens, when they get to the office, which is their place of duty, their office is a place of duty, a patrol deputy's office is that car. So when they get in that car, they hit the county line, and they check on to answer calls for service, that's when they start getting paid. Our guys coming from their bed to the office, and ain't doing nothing until they get to the office, we're not paying them to drive to the office.
Uh, county attorney, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Hammond, I didn't mean to interrupt you. This is a follow-up to your question. County Attorney Flossa, aren't they required, once they enter into that vehicle and they're within their jurisdiction, uh, they're actually working? Uh, so, uh, on, on the Fairland Standard Labor Act, once they enter the county, whether they're, or they live in the county, say they're an investigator, are they not working once they get in that car?
I think what we've, that is, this decision that we've come to in trying to parse through all of this is that they certainly can be working as soon as they enter the county. They have jurisdiction to stop people once they enter the county, so that it's not unreasonable to pay them when they cross the county line. I don't know that I've looked at it to determine whether we have to pay them the minute they get in their car in Grumman County or not, but we've looked at it from the standpoint of when is a reasonable time to begin paying someone, and since they can stop somebody, since they have full jurisdictional powers, once they cross the county line, and once they're in a vehicle in the county, that's a reasonable time to begin their work to...
I'm sorry, it still doesn't make sense to me, just because they decide to live outside of the county.
No ma'am, it's not about the county, it's about their job discipline. So if you're a patrol deputy, and you start work at zero-seven-hundred, when you reach the county line, because your office is your vehicle and your shift starts at zero-seven, you start clocking on at zero-seven, okay? So if Russ decides that he wants to be an investigator, his office is in that building. He's not stopping any vehicles going to work, he is clocking on when he gets to work as his office that he goes and sits at his desk. Now, insurance-wise, we still cover them because they're in our county vehicles, but that's just like travel time. So what I'm trying to do is alleviate somebody that lives outside of our county getting paid to drive to the county line. So if they live in Durham, Raleigh, or something like that, within our, our scope of mile and distance that they can have a take-on vehicle, we're reducing the number of hours that we create from driving from Durham to the county line. So if that's fifteen minutes a day, or twenty minutes a day, that's forty minutes if they have to drive twenty, we don't have to pay them the commute time, and if I'm not, if I'm not outspoken, Jim, they don't have to get paid travel time.
And I, I think the confusion may be coming, we're mixing several different topics, I think, so the question is, I think, your question is, are people getting paid if they live out of county for their commute time? Is that...
Well, I, I'm, I know, I'm saying, I, I, not necessarily their commute time, but once they hit the county line, where if another patrolman is, once he leaves his house, is chasing somebody down the road, why is he not getting paid?
He's also getting paid, so as soon as they, eh, eh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the decision we came to is, once they get into their car, whether they originate in Grumman County, hypothetically, somebody could start in Bullock and come to Oxford or, or whatever, once they get into that car, they have full power to stop people, they have full jurisdiction, um, if they're, once they're in Grumman County. So if somebody's coming from out of the county, they cross the county line, it clicks over. If you get in your driveway in Bullock and drive to Oxford, it starts when you get in your car in your driveway.
Right.
Um, Mr. Sheriff, questions, please?
Yes.
Good evening, Sheriff.
Wait, sir.
So I, I just wanna make, for the record here, uh, county attorney, um, I'm really, relatively certain, but you, you have the law degree, and, uh, but I believe that when a law enforcement officer enters their vehicle within their jurisdiction or within their range of response that they're required, they are to be paid. And then my question then to you, Sheriff, is, and, and, and I know you'll, you'll get the answer on that, and you'll, you'll brief us up and correct me if I'm wrong, so I'm okay with that. Um, the, the question I got is, every law enforcement officer coming into duty has a briefing time. Typically, that briefing time is anywhere from a half hour to fifteen minutes before shift. Are we gonna continue that, and we're gonna pay them for that, I hope? That, because I, I would not want a deputy coming on shift at seven o'clock and not have a prior briefing.
Right, so starting Monday, the eighth, we're changing our O chart, um, that was something we were gonna discuss, but at zero-six-forty-five, just like the detention officers have now, zero-six-forty-five and eighteen-forty-five, detention officers are required to be at work fifteen minutes prior to clock on. So we're gonna do the same thing with the shift patrol, as you said, and we talked about, they're gonna have a shift briefing Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Because of the DuPont schedule, the modified DuPont that they run, they run Monday, Tuesday at work, so Monday, they have to come in at zero-six-forty-five for a briefing. That briefing is to check their equipment, check them, pass out any relevant information. So you work Monday, Tuesday, your shift briefing will be at zero-six-forty-five on that Monday. On Wednesday, a different shift comes in at zero-six-forty-five, I mean, yeah, zero-six-forty-five and eighteen-forty-five. So Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, when the shifts overlap or change over to a different rotation, they will have a briefings that day, and then anything else will be a ca, a category of as needed for that briefing, if they have to come to their cell.
So you don't have, you will not have a designated, um, briefing every day?
Not every day, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
And that, and again, that's the sheriff's prerogative, because he is the sheriff. Um, next, um, the over, how did the overtime get to, how do we get to such, um, to, I hear what you're saying, but we had people, we had to have people either checking in prior to getting into county, getting paid for lunch, um, in training, or, um, being paid to work, um, to, to training. I guess respectfully, why didn't we stop it? Why weren't we monitoring it, and why didn't we stop it?
Traditionally, we were, that's the way it was done traditionally, and until we started kinda getting these notifications and looking at them, so I think after the first month of BLET, we started paying a little closer attention to it and started saying, wait a minute. And then when we started to see the hours increase from the six-forty-four to set, over seven-hundred, through the school putting that in there, then we stayed, we have to change the way we do on business. And then when we started looking at what deputies were doing the studies, or who was making it overtime, when I think the third and fourth month, all of that stuff went away, because we started doing it from everybody getting paid the same. Everybody, hours gonna be the same. So that's when we started having this conversation about putting in writing, because it was just me telling them, this is what's gonna happen moving forward. Now, they have a contract between me and them, that these are what we're gonna pay you for, and this is how we're gonna manage it. And then with the other folks that were clocking on, the executive time and clocking on from your phone, all those things would, you could clock in, ten minutes later, you were punched out, and you didn't punch out. Or you could be clocked in for twenty-four hours, because the system, if you clocked out, you might have went away or changed the internet connection and didn't recycle, you would have been on the clock for twenty-four hours. And I will say that finance and with Ms. Karina and them trying to help reel this stuff in, is how we kinda got to where we are, managing it efficiently. So it was a multitude of things that happened, not just oversight of, hey, why did it get there? It was a multitude of things that happened.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, do we currently have a overtime policy at the sheriff's department and a vehicle policy at the sheriff in writing?
Yes.
And does the overtime policy, it, does it, um, it, does it need to be a minute to reflect the current?
Already done.
Okay, so...
Chief Buster and I worked on it last week, worked over the holidays, and that is in place now, um, and that's where we're gonna roll out to the staff meeting on Monday zero-six-forty-five, if any of you wanna come and hear what we have to do, and how we're gonna structure it at the shift briefing, and that's why we're going to the first shift briefing is at Monday zero-six-forty-five and eighteen-forty-five that evening.
And has the county manager or anyone in the county office had a chance to review that?
No, because we just, we've been talking, I think the last time, Drew, we talked was what, over the phone Monday, Tuesday?
Last Friday.
Last Friday.
We have an employment attorney, Kevin Segalowski, with my firm, who, um, focuses his practice on this area, that has given some initial advice, and I would assume we're to review that before it's fully implemented.
Thank you, county attorney, thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, your vehicle policy, as you know, we've had discussions on it before, and so I, I understand that the sheriff makes the policy for, the board here cannot make vehicle policy, it is the sheriff's prerogative as to vehicle policy. Again, I would, I would request that you review that, and that if someone lives within the county, clearly, um, their, their cars, their, their, um, issued vehicle is clearly within, um, the caveat of how you dictate that vehicle may or may not be used. I am hopeful that if someone lives out the county, that if they're outside of thirty miles from the law enforcement center, um, not the county line, because that's, that's a big line, uh, five-hundred-and-thirty-two square miles of a line. I am hopeful that it will be, um, when they're, um, thirty miles from the law enforcement center. Uh, I think it's a burden to place on, as you will, we talked about, to place on the taxpayer to pay for people driving to work, long distances, and the county having to pay for, um, vehicle mileage, the whole nine yards. And so I'm hopeful that you will consider, um, making that policy to where it's thirty miles from that, uh, understanding people within the county, that it's a caveat. And also, my final question on that was, as you deal with your vehicle policy, and I hope you'll consider that, um, not county line, but distance from the county law enforcement center. Um, do we have a policy in writing in regards to transportation of kids?
Yes, we, um, struck at transporting children out of our vehicles, I think sometime last year, um, so no deputy should be transporting any children in their vehicles or anybody else unless I have some kind of prior knowledge of it. If there's a case with, case by case, if somebody puts something in writing to me, um, we will look at it, but right now, I don't think there's anyone that has approval to transport a child in their vehicle.
And that's a written policy, correct?
Correct.
And so if, if someone does, they would have to gain an exception from you?
Correct.
Correct. And, um, and then obviously, from the board perspective, because our, our job's not to manage the sheriff's department, our job is to be good physical, um, responsible persons of the, of, uh, our funding, uh, the county's funding. In the event there's an accident, where does that liability fall, uh, county attorney, and there's a child in the car?
If there's a child in the car and someone's negligent and, and, who's driving one of our vehicles, I'm afraid there could definitely be liability to the county in that situation. Can't, can't, can't promise that, but it doesn't sound like the type of thing that we'd have, um, shield from immunity for.
Okay, in that case, Sheriff, would you grant an exception, would, would you consider within your policy of having at least the county manager, county attorney, review that to ensure that we're at least doing that in a way that, uh, that is looking after the best interests of, of the county tax dollar?
I'll take it under advisement.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I have no other questions. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cozart, you had a question?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sheriff, I appreciate your comments earlier in rela, in relationship to having some of the deputies, uh, go out to the schools. And I know the, um, superintendent has made school safety his number-one priority, and I didn't know, I just wanna ask, are you, are you able from any kind of budgetary, uh, restraints, are you, are you able to continue that type of service?
We're not gonna stop that. What we're gonna do is, if those people have the opportunities and their caseloads are not big, and we can under manage those things, they're gonna continue that process, because it is important that we have SROs, school safety officers, in place. The statute says that I can put a, a deputy in a position for twenty weeks without them being classified an SRO. So once that general statute was clear, and once we went to the sheriff's training and standards, and we went to, uh, Betty Caldwell in reference to those things, that's when I said, okay, we're gonna start having our detectives, our, uh, patrol folks go by, sit at a school, even I'll go to them, and we just go there, mass movements. Um, we're in the conversation with Butler, I think the school board is supposed to look into Crete, no, Butler Public Safety taking on the schools on their end. I think that's supposed to be brought up at the next meeting for those individuals as well, and we're looking at OPD to take theirs. So right now, I think I have ten SROs, and we still have around twelve schools. I have an SRO going over to Chief Newman on the twenty-second. Um, he used to be at North Carolina Central, we just hired him on, put him through our FTO program, and he will go over to be an SRO as well. And we have two more that should be testing out of BLET, uh, Friday, well, one more should test out Friday, um, and then that would give him, I think, eleven SROs full-time. Um, so we're kinda good with numbers as far as the schools, but we're still gonna stay checking in, going by, having a presence there during the mass movements, and, uh, I think Mr. Stan and I have a good relationship on how we're doing things, even this disruptive environment, how we're dealing with those things and JCPC and those things too, so. We're working well with our partners, and we're gonna continue to do that process as asked.
Thank you so much, that support means a lot. Thank you, Sheriff.
And Sheriff, you, you're aware of the agreement that we, uh, have, uh, with the school board in regards to the application for funding for additional SROs that hopefully will come next budget year?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I would encourage you in your, uh, when we go into our retreat, uh, as the liaison for the, uh, public safety, that, uh, those matters, along with the matters of overtime needed, uh, to take on additional tasks and responsibilities that are needed, uh, that unpredictable, um, that you'll bring forth a plan, uh, for us to begin to look at as we look at the next year's budget.
Yes, sir, we started already, and again, uh, Ms. Karina's working with us to get that done. We're starting line by line, we're gonna run everything down. If you notice that we didn't increase, we didn't ask for a budget increase last year. Only thing we did was took the cost of living, I think a few other things. So that's what we did last year. This year, we're gonna look at it based on the ratio of, uh, residents, the projections. I've talked to Terry, and we've had some conversations about how we're gonna start presenting information to you this year coming up. So we're ahead of the game, we're working on it. Uh, myself and Mr. Sossman have had conversations already in reference to SRO funding. I've talked to, uh, Ms. Bodie as well. So we've, three have had conversations about what's on the table that's out there and how much I should try to go after. So we're talking to everybody, uh, to make this thing work.
And the understanding that we worked with the school system last year, we're asking for full funding for every school, SRO at every school?
Yes.
And so, and again, so we hope we meet that, but again, it's food for thought as you prepare your budget.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Gooch?
Uh, Sheriff, let's, um, getting back to the overtime issue.
Yes.
Uh, you, you've got somebody that tracks overtime, they, you, you've obviously got somebody that signs off and approves it. Do you have anybody that keeps track of the dollars for overtime versus what's in your budget for overtime and compares it, and lets you know what percentage of that budget you've used at what portion of time of the year?
We are now fully aware of that, and yes, we do. So Ms. Immigreen and Chief Buster are, are working with Ms. Karina, who I get those emails from, to say where we are, and Drew and, uh, I was working with our staff to make sure that we are tracking it, and we're gonna do it week by week for the BLET folks, the patrol folks that know and understand, and then the, uh, eight-to-five people understand what the responsibilities are and where we're gonna start taking this thing to. So they understand that it's not just about getting a fat cow, this is about public safety, right? So we're not gonna be doing things to increase your purses, we're gonna do things to protect this community and to be fiscally responsible, but it's a learning process for all of them. And we working together to get this thing to where it's, you know, standing up and nobody can have a question about the oversight and what we're doing. And that's why, anything that they ask me to do, anything the county manager, the county attorney, Ms. Karina brings to the table, I might kinda bite a little bit, but we gotta always work it out. Correct, ma'am?
Any other questions?
I do, one more. Sheriff, do you have anybody currently... I do, one more. Sheriff, do you have anybody currently assigned to the sheriff's department that tracks your budget numbers?
Well, Rob is, Bayless is assisting Ms. Emma, cause we're working on the budget stuff, he's helping with some of that information. But we're not gonna just put one person, cause if that person get hit by a bus, then I'm back to square one. So now we have a team approach to it, so all the chiefs have to manage and market, check their budgets, check their time. So everybody gets a copy of our balancing budget every Monday now. So every Monday, every chief gets a printout of where we are. And every Monday at ten o'clock, we have a meeting in reference to how we look and where we're doing, what we're gonna do. And then again, Drew is keeping an eye on it for us as well. So like I said, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, you ladies are doing. I think we're in a good place, working together.
All right, Commissioner Jay?
Are we housing more inmate, uh, February inmates now?
We're housing more inmates, period. Because the law changed, we now have to house pre-sentenced detainees, up to seventy-two hours. So now, we were, I think, when we first started, we were around seventy-eight, seventy-nine, now we're housing right at a hundred to a hundred and ten, and it's gonna pretty much continue to grow. But our daily average population, I put on Facebook every day, every Thursday or Friday, our daily population is posted on social media, so the community knows what we're doing, our rest, all that information that we're doing every week, we're giving weekly stats, cause I know Russ had said one time, he wanted to make sure we got stats to you, but I didn't wanna wait every quarter, now I'm doing it every week. So you will see our inmate population is gonna stay around ninety to a hundred, but I have one pod designated for federal inmates, and I think we're sitting on twenty. And I think the rate right now is like seventy-something, and we're asking the feds for the increase of a hundred and ten, so I can meet them somewhere in the middle around a hundred, maybe ninety. So we're talking to the Federal Bureau prisons and US Marshals now about that process, but I'm housing right at twenty feds right now, too. Okay. And one billionaire guy, I don't know. One billionaire guy, oh, he says he's a billionaire. That's what the media says.
On that report, Sheriff, if you mind, just, sorry. Um, could you begin to include violent crime, um, which would include, uh, drug trafficking and/or, um, assault?
You don't break it down?
Yeah. Do you have, how many homicides we have for this year?
Well, I hope.
Last year.
Last year? Two.
I think that's another good, um, getting the, uh, violent crime index, uh, for us also helps, uh, uh, allow us to make sure that we're.
You want that in the weekly one, or you wanna?
However you prefer.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, what we did was, we worked with Trent. Now we have, uh, the CAD system and analytics, um, in our SOD unit. So he just got us that, um, with, uh, Chris Bremen, um, put something together, so we now can pull all the analytics, uh, internally. So Mr. Buster is working with his folks to make sure that when we do our quarterly reports to you, that those information and stats will be there. But the weekly reports, I'll tell them to go ahead and put those, break those down even further, and get into the weeds a little more. So weekly, we're putting that information out now.
Okay.
One last comment. Last week, um, Greensboro Police Department lost a, lost an officer. Um, sorry, um, near and dear to, uh, us in law enforcement, or us that used to be in law enforcement, those are currently lost work. So I wanna make it really clear to the public and to you, Sheriff, our, our, our role is to ensure that we provide the sheriff's office with the resources they need to do the very best they can to protect our citizens, and to look after the men and women who place their lives on the line. And that's exactly what that Greensboro Police Officer did. He wasn't even working, he was off duty, and he was not in uniform. Well, there's a misnomer, um, out there that when you're in law enforcement, you're only on duty when you wear the uniform. That's not true. And so for the men and women of our departments, and for the sheriff's office, uh, on behalf of our board, I think I can say that, um, that we appreciate the sacrifices they make, the sacrifice they make over the holidays, the risks that they take, and, um, we, um, we will demand a lot, and we hope to have the right amount of accountability. At the same time is, we will support them, and, uh, we will make sure they have what they need to do the best job they can to service the people of Granville County, so.
I'm sure you guys got some complaints on Friday. I think we started Friday with the patrol saturation stuff down on the southern end, particularly down fifty-six down in Wilton. We used the school's parking lot to pull drivers, uh, we ran eighty-five over the weekend. So right now, traditionally, and I'm gonna just, I'll stop after this, traditionally, there were three staff members on a shift. When we took over for years, there were only three deputies patrolling this five hundred square miles, over five hundred square miles of Granville County. Now you have five. When this next ten get out of BLET, you have seven per, per. So I can split the county up different, so I can have different patrol districts and zones like what you're coasting to, Russ. We'll have the north, middle, and south covered with two deputies per. Then we have a crime suppression unit that we put in place right now, that has five individuals that cover the shifts as well. So they overlap, they start working at seven. I have seven canines that I'll introduce to you at the next board meeting, that we have, uh, got now. We have the first female canine officer in this, this county's history. Um, so I will bring all our canines and introduce you to all the canines probably at the next board meeting, if you wanna come out. All of them are certified, and we've already started using them effectively. We took some drugs off of eighty-five this past Friday. I think I got a gun and some marijuana, I think somebody else got some meth. So doing these patrol operations, doing these stops, Russ, and I appreciate your comments, cause it's, people don't understand, these folks put their lives out there every day, even in these schools, every day, to make sure our kids are safe. And I appreciate what you board have done for us, and the Granville County Sheriff's Office, and for me personally. So I thank you each and every one of you, and I appreciate you.
I do have one more question.
Oh, and Ms. Sue kinda wanted me to lock somebody up Sunday.
Sorry. Um, you, you actually keyed it, but, um, animal control, what about my deputy that used to be there, and we lost her? Do we have somebody back there now?
Uh, Mr., yes. Uh, he actually covers the prisons and, uh, animal control, Keith Day. So he covers both. So yes, ma'am, we've done that. Um, thank you for your presence on Sunday. I think we had a church service and donated five thousand dollars to, uh, ACIM Sunday. Um, it was a great turnout, great service, and I appreciate you being there. I think Jay was there. Yeah, I saw Jay. If anybody else won't there, I apologize, but that's the only two I saw. But we had a good time. Thank you, Ms. Sue, for coming.
Thank you.
All right, board, thank you very much, Sheriff, for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Board, you've got the recommendation from the finance officer and the county manager to recommend the approval of budget amendment number five.
I'll make the motion that we approve budget amendment number five.
Sir.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Jay for approval. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you, county managers. Thank you, Mr. Wren, county attorney, and Ms. Karina, and all y'all staff. Thank you, listeners. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Broadband.
Good evening. So the item on the, next on the agenda is to approve a completing access to broadband or a CAB partnership agreement between the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Spectrum Southeast, and Granville County. So Spectrum's broadband partnership application with Granville County was selected to receive an award through the CAB program. This project is gonna provide over fifteen hundred locations in Granville County with a high-speed fiber internet connection within two years of the agreement date. And the total project cost on this is eleven point nine million dollars, broken up this way. There'll be four million dollars provided by the state, ten thousand from Granville County, and the balance will be paid by the provider. The contract provided in your agenda item outlines the terms of the agreement and the process for payment of the county's ten thousand dollar matching funds on a reimbursement basis. One change that I wanted to point out to you from what is in your, uh, agenda packet tonight relates to the funding source for the county's ten thousand dollar match. It's identified on Exhibit J, which is on page sixty-seven of the agreement. After the county attorney, um, reviewed it, it had some, some further insight. Rather than using ARBA funds, which require a much higher level of monitoring and reporting, we're now recommending that we use unrestricted general fund revenue instead. So the county has approximately four hundred thousand dollars remaining from its ARBA funds. And if you remember, the board had previously committed those funds for broadband projects, but we wanna limit the number of sub-awards and the red tape that's associated with those funding, um, those infrastructure expenditures. So that remaining balance can be used at a future time, hopefully for one larger project. So this is the second project, um, that Granville County has, uh, been a partner in using these grant funds. Uh, the first one was a GREAT grant, which was approved in May of twenty twenty-three for Bright Speed to provide over nineteen hundred locations. The map that you have, um, in your agenda packet shows the Spectrum project that's on, under consideration this evening, as well as this combined map, which demonstrates the Spectrum and Bright Speed projects and the locations of those. So both of these projects together will bring the total locations utilizing the state's grant programs to about thirty-five hundred in Granville County. County residents can view, um, map of these award locations, they can input their address to see if their specific address is included in these projects, and the URLs are provided on the, on your screen and in your board packet. So as I said, there's a change to the funding source due to the weighty reporting and, uh, monitoring responsibilities, so we are recommending this project be funded using unrestricted general fund revenues rather than ARBA funds. And so the recommendation would be to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement and allocate the ten thousand dollars in funding from unrestricted general funds. I'm happy to take any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
Could you explain ARDOF so that people can understand there's some holes in that map, and that there's some areas we can go and can't go, and who makes the decisions on where, uh, the actual fiber goes?
So, two different things. Um, with the state projects, the Department of Information Technology, there are certain eligibility requirements for this, these grant funds, and they have to be in an unserved location or severely underserved. And those are the only project locations that are eligible for the state funds, as well as they cannot fund projects that have previously been funded by federal funds, which is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, or ARDOF. And so some of the gaps on the map that you're looking at do have ARDOF funding approved in them. We do have a map available that overlays the ARDOF funds with these state funding areas, so that folks can see which areas are covered by what. Uh, but those decisions primarily are made by the provider. They decide where they want to build, and they apply to the state for the funds to do so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Karina, I'd just like to say, I don't know who put, who laying the fiber up ninety-six, and up in different road, Jack Hancock and Enola Road, and some of those roads up there, I don't know who doing it, but they laying it.
That's good to hear. So your project that you approved back in May, um, it could be part of that project. And if you remember, Bright Speed did tell us that even if some locations that they had originally applied for, which were determined to be ineligible by the state, they still have to cross those or pass those locations to get to our project. And so it's going to expand beyond the nineteen hundred that we have partnered with them on. So I expect to see a lot of this work happening. I know I got a call from Spectrum a couple of weeks back, on the western side of the state that borders Person County, they're working on the ARDOF awards that they have had. So there's some, some fiber being laid over in that area as well.
They are.
Yes.
All that you said, they're laying, they're laying.
Great news, it's great news. It does take time. I mean, when you see the crews out there laying the line, there's some time lag between that and actually getting the connections where they're ready to connect. Um, but we are seeing progress, which is great news for us.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, two quick comments, one of which is to just appreciate Deputy County Manager Wykel for staying on top of this on all of our behalf, and also to note that for, for commissioners and for the public, that, um, we remain very committed to staying on top of all of these funding opportunities. This is sort of a, a one-time opportunity for Granville County to, to really greatly increase the level of connection that our citizens have, and, and we're committed to making full use of every federal and state dollar that's possibly available to us to, to make that happen.
And I, I will add to that, that we are having ongoing conversations with the state. Um, the next thing you'll be hearing about is some possibilities for another CAB project or for an RFP to be issued for providers to, um, propose projects to us. So that'll be the next thing that you're hearing.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Board, you've heard the recommendations. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the recommendation.
Got a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Jay. And all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, you've got the Department of Social Services next.
Me again.
You again, okay.
Very versatile tonight. So it is no secret that labor shortages are impacting industries across, across the country, as well as right here in Granville County. To combat the resulting recruitment and retention challenges, the Board of Commissioners and County Administration have been working over the past couple of years to remain competitive in our employee compensation and benefit packages. One county department that has been hardest hit by employee turnover is the Department of Social Services. Agencies across the state are competing for that same limited pool of talent, and some have been able to lure our employees away for better pay or better benefits. So in response, we've analyzed our current pay structure, and we've developed a compensation plan to increase pay for the low to mid-level positions where the most turnover has been experienced. This plan incorporates a four-pronged approach. The first step would be to create a separate pay plan for social service positions. The second step would be increasing the minimum starting salary for those low to mid-level positions. Step three is apply a formula which is based on an employee's years of service in comparison to their current salary, and then apply another increase where it's indicated. And then step four, implement a recruitment bonus for new employees and a retention bonus based on current salary level for existing employees. If you look at the graph, it illustrates the average increase to employees when grouped by years of service. So you can see that while the pay grade movement and the retention bonuses benefit newer employees, the years of service calculation will provide the most benefit to longer tenured employees. Granville County's cost share for social services employee salaries is about fifty percent, with the state reimbursement covering the remaining cost. For the current fiscal year, Granville County's share of these adjustments and bonus incentives is approximately a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And due to vacancies in the current year, lapsed salaries in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand are available in this year's budget to cover these increases. So our recommendation would be to approve the Department of Social Services salary adjustments effective on the first pay date, February of twenty twenty-four, and the bonus incentive plan effective on the dates identified in the recruitment and bonus, recruitment and retention bonus incentive plan document that was included in your board packet. Happy to take any questions.
Does the board have any questions? All right. Got the recommendation.
I'll make that motion, it's about time.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hinman, seconded by Commissioner Cozart, to accept the, approve the recommendation from our county management team. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no additional items to discuss this evening.
That'll bring us to the county attorney's report.
I don't have anything either.
Okay, getting it back on pace. Presentation by board members. Mr. Wilford, you're taking us out tonight.
Tonight.
Commissioner Hinman?
It's just been a very busy holiday, um, and with especially, like Sheriff was talking, um, with ACIM, we've been very, very busy. Um, so it was very, very awesome to be invited to the County Line Baptist, um, missionary associations' first ever combined service. And let me tell you, it was an office, awesome service. Um, there was standing room only in both the fellowship hall and the sanctuary, and, um, I just, it was awesome. So thank you, thank you very much for everybody who attended.
No report, Mr. Chairman, just like to say happy new year to everyone. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner May?
Uh, just a couple of things. One, um, again, um, just recognizing the loss of life of Sergeant Nix with the Greensboro Police Department. Uh, it was the first time the state initiated, uh, Uh, it was the first time the state initiated, um, code, uh, the blue alert, um, which, uh, I wasn't even aware of it, because I'd not heard of it before, and, uh, it, uh, was shocking to hear the news. Uh, next, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Karen and the loss of his mother. And, uh, we, uh, very much, uh, heart and prayers are with you and your family. Uh, next, uh, Mr. AJ Spies, uh, loss of his father over the holidays. And we'd like to recognize him and his family in the struggle. Losing, um, a parent, uh, is, is hard enough over the holidays, makes it even more difficult. And, um, thank you for all our first responders and what they do and our volunteers and what they do. It's appreciated. And, um, and hopefully we can work through these issues here and bring about, uh, a good resolution at the same time, um, uh, home in on where we can improve. So thank you.
All right. Commissioner Gooch?
Yes, I don't have any report. I'd just like to say, I'm very sorry about your mom.
Thank you.
And, uh, wish your family the best. And, uh, I hope everyone had a good holiday, joyous new year. And now it's time to get down to work. Budget season's coming up, so, uh, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jay?
Uh, just like to... Just like to echo Commissioner May and Commissioner Gooch about your loved one. Uh, I know it's tough. Uh, you have our prayers since I've sent them and prayers. And also just like to say, just before Christmas, uh, our alumni had the opportunity to, to serve ice cream along with the sheriff and his staff at Stove Off Shaw. Uh, I never met so many amiable children than, than, than it was that day. And they were, I think they were more thrilled about stealing the ice cream we was, we were passing out. They were more thrilled about the sheriff department, because they was asking all them deputies, all the different questions and stuff. And it's good. And it was good. And sheriff, we just would appreciate you for doing that. And we had a good time, uh, passing out ice cream and, and talking with the, the children at Stove Off Shaw. Uh, I think our next gentleman, Sheriff, is Wes Archer. Everybody, Happy New Year, and I hope your Christmas was really great. Mine was absolutely great. It was marvelous.
Good, good. So I, I just wanna say, you know, thank you so much to my Granville County family. Y'all mean, um, a lot to me. The, the first message I sent was to Deborah to let her know about the passing of my mother. Um, when I found out on the twentieth that it had happened, it was in eight o'clock at night. And, you know, the responses within minutes of Commissioner Jay calling me and all the rest of y'all reaching out. It was just, it's, uh, very heartfelt to know that I've got so many people locally, um, that I can turn to in my hour of need. Uh, with the love and the compassion that I felt from this community, um, outpouring support from folks that I haven't talked to in a while, or, you know, that kind of thing. I just, um, it, it, it's humbling. Um, it's a difficult process to go through, um, but, you know, I know that my mother is in a much better place, um, now than where she was before. So I appreciate each and every one of you. And with that, I'll say Happy New Year and God bless each and every one of you. All right. Yes, sir, Sheriff.
Um, we did lose, uh, we didn't lose. Uh, Sheriff Hardy retired Friday.
Okay.
And he is still gonna work with us eight hours a month to help maintain our armory, our assets, fixed assets, our vehicle stuff, Ms. Hagy. So he's gonna continue to work with us, but we're gonna do a celebration for him, um, just coming Friday at twelve. And if it's, uh, on your schedules and your hearts, we wanna do something to recognize his service to our community, Butner Public Safety, now Oxford PD, U.S. Marshals, and the Federal Bureau of Prisons and the Granville County Sheriff's Office. So if your schedules are clear, we would love for you to come by, like we did the dedication with Sheriff Smith. We wanna do something for John Hardy for steering a ship, and he is one of the one hundred, uh, even if he was appointed, not elected to the office of sheriff. And that's the way we treat him, and that's why I call him my sheriff as well. So if you're free, Chair, uh, we'd love for you guys to be there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, last item, are there any other matters that need to come before this board? Seeing none, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
We can't do that. There's too many people in their seats still.
I know, isn't it great? They only lost a couple.
Make a motion we adjourn.
We've got a motion by, got a motion by Commissioner May, and I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Z for the second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Be safe going home.